And so it's now recording.
All right, good evening. I had a call to order a special meeting of the Danville School Board of Directors on Tuesday, November 15th. My name is Clayton Cargill, I'm the Chair of the Board. Scroll around the room and tell you who's here, the board members, I'm sorry at the end.
Melissa Conley.
I hear you.
Melissa Conley. Molly Lee said.
David Hall. Upper school principal, upper school principals here.
Very good.
Very good. And the superintendent of schools is on the Zoom. Mark him, say hello.
Hi, Mark Tucker Superintendent.
So we only have one item on our agenda for the evening, but before I do that, are there any additions or changes to the agenda that anybody has? So the one item that we have on our agenda for the evening is we're simply this, we're here discussing with the community amongst ourselves and with the community, the Danville School Building renovation price. And so we're going to go through the slides again. We went through the other day that would have been linked to in the paper and we're going to open the floor for any questions. And we're going, we're going to see where this takes us tonight. So just before we start, we have, this is all discussion. And so when I open the floor to the session of the board, it'll be with the board and then we open it to the floor. Open it to the floor to hopefully have some answers to be questions and some questions for you to ask us that we may not have answers to. And I anticipate a lot of those tonight. So, but that's what we're looking for is we're looking to discuss with the community, our options for our situation in the school. Mark, do you need to put the slides up?
I can. I just asked Michael to jump onto the meeting. So if you can give them a minute to come on.
So our Finance Director, Michael Concessi is going to come back on. He gave a presentation the other day. I'm sure there's a lot of you read in the paper. I see a lot of faces and some names that were attending the meeting virtually. And so I know a lot of people have seen this presentation once. We're going to go through it again. It was, you know, they were big numbers and they came out as fast. And so hopefully we have had a chance to digest them and our questions are going to be good. But some people have not been here. Does anybody want to have a refresher on how we got here while we're waiting for this finance guy to show up? So, everybody? So we started looking into some of our space concerns here in the school, our space and our space concerns specifically with regard to elementary and with professionals and paraprofessionals and interventionists in the elementary school. And also our extended preschool program caused us to have a lack of space, have some ADA compliance issues. And we started looking to finding a way to add space to the, to our school campus. And as we came along the way, we found that we have a lot of, we vetted and employed to help us an architectural firm. And they're called TruX Cullens. And they came in and what they found was the school has also a great deal of deficiency. And along the way, we found that there's a great deficiency and we contracted for them to put together a report of all the, all the things that were deficient. And that report is available to you online on the Danville School Board website, on the, on the building project page. As you can look at, there's a 211 page report. There's a short video that you can watch. We've had walkthroughs. We've invited people to come to the school and do walkthroughs as well. And so we have a pretty good idea of what inside the school needs to be repaired and or replaced. And we've been looking at, we, we've been looking at several things along the way to try to try to mitigate these things. And what we've come up against is we've come up against a situation where there are too many things to fix that we, that we can't do this without a bond, can't do it in a small matter. So we're going to try to look at doing this, some larger, some larger bond issue. And that's where we are right now. And we've gotten some numbers here recently. And I'm hoping that once we have these numbers and we can talk to the community about what is and isn't feasible to try to bring the school to the 21st century. And Michael Concessi is on. Michael, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Would you be willing to, would you be willing to walk us through the tax presentation again? The tax impact presentation?
Sure.
So again, this is Michael Concessi. He's our Finance Director for the CCSU and that includes Danville.
Thanks, Clayton. So we put this presentation together, just basically walk everybody through how this project would impact the Danville residents. So we wanted to take a step back. Starting with this first slide, just talk about how Danville, you know, funds its education needs. You know, currently, when you look at Danville as, as a school district and as a town, currently, the residents contribute only 32% of that total Danville school budget. The other 68% of the funds needed to educate children of the Danville school come from two major buckets, the non-residential property taxes and then just the basically the state ed fund, which has many sources of income to help that. Just want to have everybody step back and just absorb all that before we get to the next slide.
So yeah, we're blank for just a second too, Mike. So. Bear with us, everybody. We have a technical issue here. I have a little. I have it very small. We're back on.
I'm assuming there's no questions on this first slide?
Not right now.
Okay. All right. So originally we were asked to kind of look at two different options. Those options were, you know, a $70 million renovation, which would include a new wing. The other option was build an entire new building. And we took some estimates based on, on that information and just tried to lay out, how would we borrow this money? Right? We would access money as we needed it. Think of it like a line of credit. Or I guess the best way I can think about is a home equity loan. We have the ability to borrow as we go to get the project done. And this, this was the breakout of the assumptions that we assume based on the consultant's information. The point here is that, you know, obviously we could be off a few million a year, you know, in between the years, but most importantly, you know, we would start borrowing July of '24, which would be fiscal '25. And if everything stayed on track, ended in August of '26, which is fiscal '27. And either scenario assumed a 30-year bond at 4% interest.
Oh, so, okay.
Is this a, like the 4% interest? Is this a fixed interest? Or will it be an adjustable interest?
So, yep. So we modeled it to be fixed. Okay. The reason why we did that is I don't think I'd be doing my job recommending something that's not fixed for 30 years. You know, if this was a one or two-year arm, maybe we could, you know, move towards a variable solution. But we're borrowing money for this long period of time. And they get de-risks, go into a fixed interest rate approach. And if interest rate changes and goes downward, we could always refinance. But this assumption assumes 4% flat for 30 years, fixed.
Okay, Mike, go on.
Okay, I'm ready for the next one. All right. Was there a slide before this one? I thought there was one more slide in between this one and the one we just showed. Can we just go back one page maybe? I just want to make sure. No, that's the last slide. Right. Yeah. Slide three. Thank you. Okay, right there. Perfect. So the previous page talked about the amounts that we would borrow. Okay. Over time till we get to the total amount needed to finish the project under either scenario. This page is just talking about what the increase in debt service would be. And that just simply means, you know, and it would be interest, obviously in fiscal '24, '25 and '26. Then starting in '27, we would then obviously make a principal and interest payment. And that's all this is trying to reflect. What would be the debt service during the construction phase and then upon the completion stage, what would we be looking at? That's it. This would be incremental to the existing budget. Okay. Now, this slide has a lot of information. I'm going to do my best to try to break it all down into bite-sized chunks. Okay? Hold on one second. I'm trying to move. Yeah, all right. So look, we try to break this down so that people could understand how you want this project. Go ahead. Sorry.
What's this slide?
Yeah, no, this is the right slide.
I just blew it, everybody. Sorry. I got lost. We lost it for a couple of seconds. Clayton, it's my fault.
Oh, okay. Well, the slide we should be showing, the debt impact on the Danville's school just a taxpayer is based on the home site value. Is that the one you guys are all looking at?
We're back. Yes.
Good. Okay. So this slide was just trying to explain to everybody, what would the impact be for those people? And, you know, sorry, let me back this up. For every $100,000 home site value, what would the impact be based on the debt service all the way to the year when we completed? Now, to be clear, the home site value, only 32% of the, of the residents of Danville, or 249 homeowners, if you will, pay this full amount. Because this slide affects people whose annual income is greater than $137,000 a year, regardless of the home value. So for every $100,000 of that home value, this is how much their taxes would go up from either scenario of the project.
So if I'm correct, you're saying that if we live here in Danville for anything over $100,000, we, in year '27, we'd be paying $1,000 additional just on the building for $100,000.
Correct. Assuming your income is greater than 137, your household income for every $100,000 home value, if your home's worth 100, you'd pay about 1,000. If it's 500,000, you'd pay, you know, about 5,000. Yep. That's right. But again, only 249 residents in Danville are at this bracket, are in this category.
It's not residence, but it's that it's the property taxpayer. So it's not just, just, I don't think that was, I think that was just a, I mean, you spoke about that, but it's the homeowner is not the residence.
What? So these are
we have residents and apartments, we have residences. Right. So I just want to make sure, yeah. So I think it was a total of 786 total property owners in Danville. And then he'll go through that, but just to clarify that it wasn't residents, it's, it's property owners, not residents.
Sorry, resident homeowners.
Household. So if you have like a family of four.
Not non-residents.
Yes, it's just the residential property owners. So if you have a family living in a house.
249 of the, yeah, yeah.
Another question.
I keep hearing it's underlined, bolded. What is the thing? I guess the pointing out that only 32% of Danville resident homeowners. Why, why do we keep nailing, calling out that? What's your point?
So there are, there are four different, four or five different designations here and we are, we're income sensitive on our taxes. And so he's, what he's pointing out is the income sensitivity of the taxes. And so in this first one, only 30% of the 249 homeowners pay that full number on their full, their full value of their home. And as we get into the next slides, you'll see that some other people pay at a different rate based on income and based on home value. And so this first, this first batch is those 32%, those 240 other people paying on their house site value only. Okay, Mike?
Yep. Yeah, I tried to bold it. I tried to bold it on the takeaway, the bottom of the, of the bottom of this page. Resident homeowners pay these kinds of taxes on the house site value only.
If, if they make more than $137,000 a year, you've got to keep those two thoughts in mind at the same time.
Yep.
So any, any resident homeowner in Danville who earns less than $137,000 a year is going to pay something less than this. And you're going to see how that works in the upcoming slides.
So that $137,000 is the top tier over that. And there's no income sensitivity. Below that, we have some more slides.
Correct. That is absolutely correct.
Ready for the next slide?
Are we ready for the next one? This one's the hardest. We're going to spend the most time on this particular slide. It's a lot of information, so let's try to break it into chunks here. All right. So basically there are three different Danville homestead property taxpayers who will pay a combination. There's actually four in total, but this slide's addressing three. The previous category of taxpayers is on the previous slide. They're paying the full amount because their income is greater than 137. These three examples on this particular page now impact, I'm trying to address all the other particular taxpayers and what categories they fall into based on income and home value. All right. Category number one here, we have about 186 Danville homestead property owners with income less than 47,000. Now, because of that, their tax will be capped at 2%. So no matter what we do in this project, they'll have no impact from this debt. The only exception would be if these particular property owners had a home site value greater than 400,000. And if they did, for every 100,000 over the 400,000, they would have to pay what the same taxpayers on the, on the previous page. So in this example, if we had an example of household income of 47,000, they had a home value of 500, they would pay 920 on that, on that first 100,000 over their home value. So they would be impacted if they had, in fact, a home greater than 400. Any questions on that first bullet, that first group?
All right.
If somebody, yeah, Allison, family home, if somebody had a family home, say, you know, seven generations, but they made less than 47,000, but that family home was worth 500,000, but you're saying that would bump them back to paying back on the last page, the same amount as someone else? I just want to get
Only the, only on their home value higher than 400,000.
So say their house was $500,000, worth $500,000 and they made 47,000, they still would be asked to pay how much?
920.
He just I just wanted to be clear on that.
If you were 600,000, you'd pay 1,840.
Even if you
a thousand a year. Yeah, just on the
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Correct. Correct. That's the only exception to that group of
The slides came down. The slides came down. Mark, did you have the slides up?
I think you're, you're on mute, Mark. Okay.
We're back.
Okay, perfect. All right. So we addressed the first group. The second group of Danville homestead property owners will have income obviously between 47, which was the lowest threshold, up to 90. In that income range, they would see their income sensitive rate increase by 1.55% to a to, to a total of 3.88. So let's use an example here. We have household income of 60. We have a house site value of 250. They would pay an additional $930 on the property taxes, which is the 60,000 times the increase of the 1.55. Looks like we're losing the slide again.
Everybody's still paying attention. Thanks, everybody for paying attention. To be impatient here. The slides come from one place, the guys talk from another place, and we're all here.
Okay. Okay. Now, here's an exception, similar to the first category. As you're seeing a trend here, with the income sensitive, the home value does matter. So it would be the exception. In cases where we have a home site value greater than 400, the additional property tax of that 92 cents previous from the first category would apply. So let's, let's walk through an example. We have household income of 60. But we have a home value of 500. They would pay an additional 1,850 in total. And here's how it breaks out. Okay? They still pay that 930 we talked about because of the income sensitive rate would increase by 1.55. So income of 60,000 times the increase of 1.55% gives you your 930. Then, because their home value is greater than 400, that extra 100 would, would be applied times the 92 cents. On that slide four, we talked about of those highest paying property tax owners. So there, the 930 plus the 920 gets you your 1,850 in totality for this particular property owner.
No more questions, Mike, on that. So go on.
Great. Here's the final, the final grouping, which is the lowest tier, I think, from my numbers, from what I've seen here, right? Because the 110, about 110 Danville homestead property owners have income between 90 and that 137. That 137 should ring a bell. That was the maximum threshold on the previous page. They would see an increase that is a hybrid of number one and number two above. So let's, let's just pause for a minute. Now, the exception with this grouping is for house side values greater than 225. So the lower your income, you have a, a max threshold on a 400. Now that your income is in a higher bracket, the home site value, the max value drops to 225. Because then when it does, that additional property tax rate of that 92 cents per every 100 would apply. Let's, let's use an example here. So we use an example of a household income of 125. And we have a home site value of 400. They would see a total of 3540 on their property taxes. How did we get to that? First part, income, the 125 times that income sensitive rate increase of 1.55, that gets you your 1,934, just on the income sensitive piece. And because you're in this bracket, this range, and your property value is 400, which is 175,000 over the threshold, you have to apply that 92 cents. That gives you 1,600. Totality is 3540. Now, there's a little footnote in here that Mr. Beck, Scott Beck, that is, which is very important. Income sensitive only applies to house site value, which is the home itself and up to two acres of land. Homestead value is all the additional land that is contingent to the house site. This additional land beyond the two acres is subject to the additional property tax rate of that .92, the 92 cents per 100,000. The biggest takeaway here again is that what I'm showing here is all incremental. This, this is a, it's not a function of what we spend as a school to operate and educate. This is just the increases related to the bonded debt. As a reminder, 68% of the Danville resident homeowners pay taxes on a combination of income and home value, which is what this slide is trying to tell. This is two-thirds of the Danville homeowners would pay something in this range versus the previous slide, which is one-third of the Danville residents, that home, home property homeowners, I should say, who are residents.
Okay.
You also have some questions that are coming through online.
Okay.
I have a question.
Lucky.
But I don't, I don't see how you figured what I made per year. It's got anything to do with my property taxes. So I have a hard time understanding that. If I make $200,000 a year, what does that got to do with my property tax?
It's just the education part of it. Other than that, the state doesn't, they try to equalize it. So if different towns, what do you call it? In one town, there's going to be the same rate, that's whatever. So in a third town, it's going to be a different, it's the same, maybe same naturally. But that's, that's what, it's a, it's a state of Vermont that is doing this. And not only that, is then the next tier that they're going to is income sensitivity. And they want to show that people that have lower incomes are not versioned by a tax, but so much, I mean, the tax comes from somewhere.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like it just falls out of the
Yeah. Thank you, Mary.
I'm just confused about how, like, what you said. Where, where, how does the town, when they're comparing up who pays what and what tier I want to meet?
The town, the town doesn't, the town doesn't know. It goes off line seven on your taxes. So when you do your Vermont taxes, you send your taxes in and your adjusted income is line seven. And then that goes to the state and your property tax is based on your income with, is that?
I think, I think everybody should realize that the main number is the school budget. That's the very first number that determines everything. So the bigger your school budget number is, the more your tax rate is going to be. So that, that's the only thing you really have control over. And then the other pieces that fit into the form, the term by the state of Vermont, but it all starts with, you know, the budget that you were doing for that town.
So just thank you. Triosty, but people, why do people who have second homes not have to pay any?
I, it's not true that they don't have to pay any. That's, that's maybe the first thing I would say. It's not true that they don't have to pay any.
Clayton, can I jump in and?
Superintendent, like, yeah, go ahead.
Good. A couple of things here, if you, if you don't mind. I, I don't, I can't see everybody in the audience. A gentleman had asked, how does the state know how much money I make? You, when you file your income taxes, there's two forms that you're supposed to do every year. At the same time you file your taxes, which are used to determine your, whether or not you're income sensitive and, and what tax rate you actually pay on your property taxes. I, I don't remember the exact form numbers, but there's two form numbers. So if you're filing Vermont income tax, that's how the state knows. And that's where the data comes from. In the sec, this most recent question, Clayton, would you remind me what it was?
You, you, so his question was, why don't non-residents have to have any payment in on this particular thing?
They do. So there's a
Now, why wouldn't non-residents have to pay? Or businesses in this case, non-residents?
Not, non-residents pay education taxes every year. It's got nothing to do with the construction project, but the non-resident tax rate is set statewide by a formula that the state uses. It's not, it's not influenced by directly or a function of any, the Danville school spending either for operating the school on a year-to-year basis or this construction project. So there's a certain percentage that non-resident taxpayers pay the people that own, in Danville that own homes on, second homes on Joe's Pond, the businesses. I'm not exactly sure how the business taxes work, but that's a separate, that's a separate percentage that's calculated and set every year by the state that applies to every single town and the exact same percentage regardless of whether we're talking about Danville or Burlington or, or Stratton or wherever. So it, the non-resident taxpayers do pay, but they're not included in these formula calculations here because none of these numbers affect, directly affect the, what the state sets the non-resident uh, none of these numbers affect, directly affect the, uh, what the state sets the non-resident taxpayer rate at.
So non-residents and businesses pay uniformly across the state.
Right. It's, it's a fixed percentage. It's count, I don't know how much it changes every year because I don't pay attention to it, but it's set by the state and, um, um, it's not a function of the, it's, it's not a function of these formulas.
That, I was just gonna say the, uh, right now, the, the rate for, and, and it's not, not, I don't know, they call it non-homestead. They've changed the term homestead and non-homestead. But that rate was a dollar forty something, but say a dollar fifty. But the thing is, is that rate is not going to jump up proportionate to like, if, if this were to go in this ninety-two cent increase went in, you're not going to see the same increase in the non-resident, nowhere near. So they're going to pay, pay a much lower rate than non-homestead people than what the.
Right. But as, so as a percentage of the overall budget in the state, there might be a creep up across the state from this if it were to pass, but it would, that would be, be shared across all non-homesteaders and all businesses.
So going back to all those allocations, like, I, I, I think it's a little deceiving to say, oh, it sounds like you're trying to tell us we're only paying a third of this bond issue. And I, I, I take issue, or, or you're, you're starting, you know, the, the homestead people pay, you know, that much, and then, you know, non-homestead, and then the state fund kicks into the balance. Is it, if you start changing any of those percentages, those allocations, that may be statewide, what, what it kind of averages out, but if all of a sudden your tax rate goes up to two and a half or, uh, two dollars and fifty cents, you're now way up above what the others that may be running around at a dollar and a half. And so that skews, and I think you'll find that the residents, their portion that they're paying is much larger. So I, I mean, I just, I'm a little confused perhaps why you keep saying it, it, or maybe I misinterpretate that you're indicating like, oh, we only are paying a third of this. Wow. So that's, that's not true. And I, I, you take, so why do we even present?
So they're, they're basing those, they're basing those numbers on the, uh, the fiscal, the current fiscal year that we're in and the spending that we have.
Yeah, I know, but it, it sounds like, no, don't worry, you don't, you're only going to pay for a third of this and, and this.
You're not going to hear me say, don't worry. Please worry about this.
Do is like the state of Vermont, well, it's the state of Vermont. Every one of us are, our state of Vermont. So whether you pay it indirectly or directly, um, you, you still are. So I should.
Yeah, I think that if I can, if I can respond to that, Mary, I get your point about the, the money has to come from somewhere, but the, the, the roughly third of the uh, of the money that comes in to support Danville school operations today comes from other tax sources like the sales tax, like the liquor tax, like the, uh, you know, the, uh, the profits from the lottery fund. Um, and some, I don't think it's a hundred percent of the sales and, um, I'm sorry, the uh, rooms and meals tax, but there's a percentage of that, and that gets lumped together and gets put into the education fund as a source of funding that's shared by all of the school districts in the state of Vermont. So it's, it's absolutely not the case that a hundred percent of the education fund comes from resident taxpayers and non-resident taxpayers. Uh, it is, I would agree with you, Mary, that the ratios will fluctuate somewhat and it, um, it's not clear to me how much it will fluctuate, um, how much it will fluctuate, you know, given if this bond passes, but it's, the current ratios are about a third, a third, and a third roughly. And I'm, I'm, just give me a, some grace on rounding here just to make the point. But there is still a, a big chunk, a third of the education fund comes from non-property taxpayers in the state of Vermont. It comes from other tax sources. Now granted, if you go out and buy things and pay sales tax, you're contributing to the ad fund that way, but you, it's not directly related either to your property value or where you live. Um, or how much money you make. You pay six percent sales tax on everything that you buy and for, for most things that you buy in Vermont. And that money automatically goes into the education fund. Does that make sense?
Oh, it, it just makes sense. I, I just had a, it was just my personal opinion. I thought it was being presented more that, don't worry, you only have to pay a third of this and, and, um.
Well.
And I don't.
Yeah, I don't.
And you know.
You're not gonna.
Some of the non-homestead, all our residents here.
Right.
A lot of them.
They do.
A lot of people in Joe's pond are not necessarily out of state people.
Oh, I understand that. Maybe, Mary, I want to, can I try it this way? Can I try it this way? It's, would it make more sense if we said that, um, that, um, the property tax payments of residents and non-residents in Danville are not the only source of money that will pay for, for education and for, and subsequently for this for this bond if it's approved? It's not all coming from property tax. That's the point we're trying to make and we're showing you those three ratios, which, you know, they'll be, they, they fluctuate a little bit from year to year, but that's the point we're trying to make. We're not trying to say, oh, you're only going to pay for a third of it. That's not.
Yep. Yeah. One from Molly.
Um, to clarify, so we have our state fund. We know that pay the income sensitivity portions to residents that receive those. But in terms of our budget, just thinking about what Mary was saying, what else is the state paying for its capital budget other than helping residents? Is it going to go to the, for pupil cost? Or how are we going to put this in our budget? Um, I just, I was thinking about how she worded that and that, um, how much could potentially fall back on the residents that are paying, if dynamics change in our community, and how much really can the state pay with this capital project outside of our operating expenses? But that clarifies it. Is that what you were saying, Mary?
I, I wasn't even going to do. I was, no, I was just making the point. It just, that it seemed like every time we went through and it's like, oh, don't worry, you're only, the the residents are only going to pay a third of this, and somebody out there is going to pay the remainder of it. And then, and then that, 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 it's really gone way beyond what it needs. Yeah, I, I'll even take back my, I was just trying to say that there are more people than just us residents that are paying.
So I, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna ask Melissa to ask a question, and then I have a couple of questions online, and I see Allison, and I don't know your names, but in just a second, okay? Just give me one second. So Melissa?
So I just wanted to clarify. So we're talking about this third, and we're talking about our regular school budget that we vote on every year, but are we saying this third is also going to cover the, the bond that we're trying to do for the new school, or is that just talking about a regular budget that we vote, we vote on every year?
There, there's ninety-two cents is in addition. And then, so this is, this, this is a larger number than that, but that's, that was, according to this, that would represent a third based on these calculations. It's when it goes to the state, and this is the same thing Mary's talking about, this, in this particular go-round, it was a third. And then thirty-nine percent came from non-resident taxpayers, thirty-two percent came from the state. In, in this particular goal.
Yeah.
So in the four million plus would be in the school budget.
Every year.
You don't put a third of it in. Yeah.
So. So, okay.
So, so, so it's clear, the, the numbers that are being presented tonight are numbers that are going to affect taxes because of the building. There will be pay increases and health care, cost increases and stuff like that. You're not seeing any of that tonight. You're seeing the building and chances of.
Yes, speculative numbers about, about the building. Speculative numbers about the building, not the reality that already exists of.
What you were asking.
I can, I'll put you on cue.
Yeah. Thank you.
So I have on, on, online, there are three questions from Stacy Andre, and I'm hoping that, um, I, if I can read through, Mike maybe wants to take these, or Mark?
All right. Yeah, I'll take, I'll take them.
Some of them real quick. The first one is, how are you getting four percent interest? And that, that was, we were estimating, right?
That's, we had to put something in, and so we put a, a conservative number. I know I'm, I'm going to guess that Stacy's wondering why we think we could borrow at four percent when home and, home buyer interest rates are up above eight percent, but when you're talking about a thirty-year bond from a, from uh, either a state or federal source, the, the interest rates are going to be significantly lower than, um, you know, than what you would pay if you were going to the bank to borrow money to buy a house. Um, you know, when, when Nuski financed theirs, uh, before the interest rates went up, they got an interest rate of just over two percent. So we were trying to be conservative. It's a guess. We don't know exactly what the rate will be, but we had to put something in, uh, to, to do the illustration.
All right. So to everybody in the room, and you pointed it out to me, Stacy got skipped a couple of times. I got five Stacy questions in a row, if it's okay.
Okay. Um, yeah, the slide wasn't showing. It came back. I was having problems with the PowerPoint. Um, Mike, on slide number two, she's asking, uh, why, discuss how three point eight eight percent equals twenty-three hundred and twenty-six dollars? Um, let me, let me put this back up so you can. So this is slide two. No, that's not slide two. It was slide three.
I think she, it wasn't on slide two.
I think it's the last slide.
This one here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think. Three point eight eight percent. It, it was trying to show what the increase would be. So we, that one point five five percent increase, right? The previous, without it.
The rate was like two point three something.
He's one or.
Yeah, so I think the income sensitive rate that I think was in fiscal twenty-three was around two point three three percent. So I'm saying it, we, it would increase for the Danville property owners in that, in that range. That's what I was trying to say. I'm not sure if that answers the question.
She's got some more questions, so we'll see.
All right. Um, so then she asked, are these income sensitive calculations set by the state of Vermont, or is this particular project on behalf of the bond? They are set. These are, uh, they're set by the state of Vermont. These calculations would affect every, um, every education tax calculation in the state. In fact, these same rules for determining, uh, how much you pay on your, uh, how much you pay based on your household value and income are, are in effect every single year. And everybody's been, um, has been living their life under the effects of these rules. It's baked into the, uh, rules for, um, baked into the education funding formula that's been in place since, I don't know, for fifteen, twenty years now. Um, and just, you know, for FY twenty-three, you could go back to your, uh, to your tax bill and you could look at your tax bill and figure out, you could reverse engineer it and figure out which of these categories you fell in. Um, if you know, um, you know, we can't illustrate for every single taxpayer and what the direct impact would be on every single taxpayer, but you know what, how much your household income is, and you know how much, uh, your house, your home site value is. You could take the information on this slide and it should, and calculate it out, and it should be, you know, within a penny or two of what you paid for uh, education property taxes in FY twenty-three. It's the same set of rules. There's nothing, it just, this is nothing unique about it, and there's nothing new in here. So Danville residents will pay increased education taxes and our overall state tax rate will increase as well. Um, I think the answer to that is no, as I'm reading the question. Uh, you're going to pay, um, if this bond is, if this project is approved and the bond passes, um, residents will see some increase in their education taxes over and above what they're already paying to operate the school. I don't know what, exactly what, Stacy, what you mean by our overall state tax rate will increase as well.
Um, I think she typed that in right after I said that there might be an incremental change for businesses and.
Okay.
Non-residents. And so I think that was, that question.
Okay. I, I'm not trying to dodge it. I'm just not sure what that, what that means. Um, and then she said, clarify, the state funds are already assisting to reduce the overall education. I assume you mean the education tax rate. Uh, that is true, uh, because the state funds that, you know, thirty-something percent is not money that's raised by, um, uh, through the property taxes paid by Danville residents and non-residents. Um.
Hey, Larry, can you let Stacy talk? Can you allow her to speak? Give her the.
Yeah, I can, I can.
Okay, that'd be great. And then we can make sure that we got, we got things clarified.
Yeah, I know. I'll, let me go and do that.
Uh, so I have to promote her to panelist part?
Oh. Yeah, she can't. Okay.
But we can.
Yeah, we can do that.
Team Tars.
Oh, hi, there she is. Hi.
Well, thank you. I feel so honored to be joining your, your panel. Uh, thank you. No, you've been, um, deciphering my questions, uh, quite expertly. So thank you for, uh, taking those. Sorry they were at, delayed through the process.
That's all right. Room now, okay, Stacy? Do you want to sit? I think next was Allison.
Oh, yes, thank you. I had a few actually as well. So one, just going back to what Mary said, which I think is really important, since there has been some conversation about shift for the education fund happening, because a lot of auditors coming in buying property for over value, so you have seventy thousand dollars or more. So it looks like there's going to be possibly some shifting to the education fund. So what I'm wondering is, if that happens in Danville, I know we're obviously receiving town, but if our numbers reduce, we as a town, is this, I'm just clarifying, are the ones responsible for this bond? So if we end up with less money coming in from the education fund, basically it's then going to be put on us as the resident homeowner taxpayers to compensate. But that difference, is that true?
So what I was learning this, before the meeting started was, we send our budget to the state and then they send the money back. We, our, our budget, our budget and the loan, the, the loan service is part of the budget, and we send our budget to the state and that comes back. So the individual, individual changes like that, like, let's say one person moves out of town, doesn't, then make it seven hundred and eighty-six people, now seven hundred and eighty-five people are now burdened with that.
No, but that would be that thirty-two percent that you're saying, right? Third, but I'm saying it's the education fund fundamentally. And that should also, basically that difference, if we receive less from the education fund, that difference is going to then have to be sort of spread out among the, the taxpayers.
No.
I know.
No, she's short.
No, because it's, no, the, I think the answer is no, because if somebody sells their property and moves out of town, somebody else is going to own it and they're going to have to pay taxes on it. So.
Okay, so.
And maybe you.
Each Tuesday, if ten kids from Danville end up going to State Johnson's Academy and those people end up claiming non-residency, then you're out, folks.
The pupils. Is that the pupils or the house? Because the house, in that scenario, the house is.
Don't say your pupils drop.
Okay, simply, but you have to understand how education is funded here.
This is Eric, he's on our advisory and he's going to answer the question.
Okay, the way that Vermont funds education, we set a budget here on the school board, we vote on it on town meeting day, so that in in July, the grant list comes out, it says how much all the property in Vermont is. And then we also have filing a. The state of Vermont has formulas for each town. So in residents, residential households, the first number in that formula that Mary's talking about is our budget. What's our actual budget? And then we divide that by the number of students. There's actually a formula for equalizing students around the state, but it's not a lot of important. So long as you follow that formula, that's what you pay for residential tax. The city, the, the commissioner of taxes will set the non-homestead rate statewide to figure out how to cover all of the educational funding, along with the budgets of sales tax, hotel, lotto, et cetera. And so the, the state commissioner of taxes sets all those things and then sends us our budget back in order. That's codified in law, and it was, the formulas were just updated, uh, here in Act twenty-seven as well, but minor changes. So the point is, is that the way that this budget works, it's all at the state level. So all you have to do is follow the formula, and that's what this formula does.
Right.
So, so, but, no, we don't, we don't specifically like we have to cover this with our homestead. Nobody's doing that account. You do the formula, you send your taxes to the state of Vermont, and the Vermont State Education Fund pays our entirety of our.
Second line down was the amount of students. So if there's less students in this town, that raises the category.
Yes. So I think I saw Allison, can you do me a favor on that one? Can you write it up and email it to me?
No, not right now.
No, not right now, not right now, but.
This question is very important, but the other thing I'm saying is so every year there is an equalization study down.
We got to. We have to.
The state doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't shift every year. The formula is the form.
But it does vary based on the grand list, real estate.
That's the CLA, that's the CLA.
That's that's not how education funding works.
Alright, so I'm going to, I'm going to pull everybody back forward just for a second. And I know we have a lot of, we have a lot of questions. That sounds like a tough one. It needs to be, to be given a thoughtful answer that can be written down so that we can repeat it. And but I think it's it's a good question and there's there's several parts to it and your and your part is equalize pupil and your part is. Her part is about the CLA. And so I think that we need to take both of those questions. And one of the things that I hope you're doing here is bringing us questions so that it can be the frequently asked question that we can have answers to. And so. I will, do you think you have a grasp on both of those questions?
I just think maybe if we give Scott, if he wants to type in and answer any of them.
Mr. Beck, you want to tackle any of these?
Let's just simplify. You know, Danville's or any other school that ever had a tax rate has nothing to do with. How much an education taxes is collected in. Danville, where your homestead or your non homestead, it's just, it's entirely a function of. How much you ask the education fund to go on it. How many equalized pupils you have, which determines her pupil spending. And then it's just divided by a yield.
Right.
But if if for some reason. The the property grand listing Danville cratered or exploded, or you know, whatever the case might be, that's what that wouldn't change your tax rate.
That's just that that just becomes on the CLA, right? That just that that you got to, you got to. Another another factor becomes the CLA becomes a divisor again after the yield rate is attached and so.
That's an after your equalized rate is set.
Alright. So we need, we need to figure that one out. Lance, you're in the queue and so you're next.
Oh, so. On the on the new building option, we did seventy five million new building. That's. I just want to clarify, you mentioned that's just for the building, doesn't include new furniture. Increased staff.
That. That's seventy, no Clayton, that's seventy five million dollar. That seventy five million dollar number that we're using for the new building. Is building the structure, making it operational, buying buying furniture, putting, you know, lights and the whole thing. It's creating. A it's it would be, the end result would be a brand new building. Ready for kids to move in and be educated. There's there's money in that estimate. For buying the necessary furniture and and everything else that goes that would go into a new school building, lab equipment, et cetera, et cetera. That's all part of that. That's not just. Building a structure, a bare structure that then you have to go out and furnish. That's included in that seventy five million dollars.
Okay, so on a subset of that, now that that part. Would do we project an increase to staffing?
Not specifically because of the building was staffing is driven by the number of students. That are enrolled in the school. You know, there is, there is some thought that a a new up to date school building might attract more tuition students. To come to come to Danville. And that's, you know, the the Danville school right now benefits from about an eight hundred thousand dollar tuition income from students who come in from other sending districts. Who are not residents of Danville and they pay a straight tuition fee and that eight hundred thousand dollars or so roughly actually reduces. The amount of money that the Danville has to raise to pay to educate all of the students in the school and actually lowers your tax rate. Your education tax rate because we benefit from tuition students coming in and paying. The pay from other towns and those towns giving us money to educate their students.
My last question is on, if you just like for the thirty two percent operating, the thirty two percent. What happens if I know we're talking cubo, but what happens if there's a shift, people do move out and lower. Brackets come in and you lose that thirty two percent, that's twenty percent. Where is that burden?
Now, that's not what happens.
That's all, that's Allison's question, just the same, just the same. So. That's that's the same question. You send your budget in and then we come back. It's Peter and then Karina.
So. Are the residents of get to vote on this bond on whatever percentage that you're. With the amount of the bond and a percentage that you're asking for.
On the on the loan rate like that, are you going to, are you asking what the bond proposal is going to pertain if it gets to a bond?
Saying, once you know the financing is. Once everything is set. Do we? Do we get to vote on it or we just? Having to say. To have no control over.
No, this is so so this would, this would come to you. And then it would be, we have one thing probably up or down, yes or no? This is the loan, this is the interest, this is the situation, this is what we plan to do and you see the plans and then you would be able to have a yes or no vote. And then you'd have one and I'd have one. So it wouldn't be where I'd have any more than you would in this case, Danville taxpayers and homeowners, yes or no?
I heard the the very first part of it is would the residents of Danville have a vote and? And that's no. The registered voters. Would vote. And I'm not saying. That anybody should, yeah, if you're on residence. You should probably be registered to vote and you should probably vote because I don't.
Alright.
Saying, so residents versus. Registered voters.
Yeah, registered voter as well.
So a non resident that that not that doesn't claim homestead.
No, I think he means people, I think he means people that didn't register to vote, the people that aren't on the list of voters. People that.
But who live in town and own a homestead, they live in town.
They're not, they don't, they don't do their civic duty.
Like wouldn't be burdened with the funding that they're voting.
They would still.
Gets to vote?
No.
All residents.
Or if a person lives in Danville and rents a house and they're a registered voter, they have.
They're a voter.
So they're not going to obtain the burden of paying. All they're doing is paying rent. And and their rent might go up, so.
They're paying a portion of this burden because they're not resident status, not homestead status on that property. So people that aren't going to be having their taxes increased, and I understand like voter versus voter, but. Why would people that aren't going to be paying an increase able to vote on? Something that they're not going to be paying.
They do today. The. If you are, if you are considered a resident and eligible to register to vote in Danville, you get to vote whether you own the property that you live in. Or you rent the property that you live in and that's true today and it'll be true tomorrow. So that's already happening. Now, I I think if that was, was that Karina asking that question? I mean, we're talking about it, we're talking about a different magnitude. Of the vote, but they still get to vote if they are eligible to register as a voter in Danville, they get to vote on this bond.
Do you know how many there are of those?
No, no. That Karina just had her hand up for about half an hour. So you're on Karina.
If it's, I I like to. Personally, kind of out of the weeds of the money piece of it and just kind of back to the overarching. Idea of this. Personally, I think it, this is a huge, huge burden to place on a community. And it's a really big ask of the community without a really clear justification. And that's where I'm having a problem.
Did you go to the website? Did you look at the report?
I sure did. I read the entire report and I watched, you know, I have lots of issues with those that I've worked with right now. Thank you. But I would like to just go back to the basics. So you said at the very beginning. The things that kind of kicked us off, one is space. And the other was that you hired TruX to come through and do a walk through and point out all the problems, the deficits that you said in the school.
They did a deep dive, more than a walk.
Yeah, so to break that into two questions. One, on the space issue. Where is the? Third party, non architect, which there's. A financial interest there. Where is the advice? That has come from someone, an expert, who has drawn up what additional, like the details, here's what we need for additional space.
You mean like stake standards?
No, no, like you said that this was driven by, we need more space in the elementary school, more space for the parents.
Wait, wait, right.
So where was the, okay, here's what we need. We need. Fifty thousand more square feet more for elementary students. We need two more classrooms. Like where are the num, like the concrete thing? That we actually, what's the need? On the space. So that's the first question. And I have another question after that. Where is that? I didn't see that.
Can you write that? Mark, you have anything on that one?
I thought that was, that was part of the study report that the architects did, so she got me on that one. I don't know.
I'm saying we. You're you're, we've gotten to a new building. And we got here by going through certain steps.
Yeah.
You're saying we got here because we needed more space.
That's how we started, yeah.
Right. So where is the space? Like where is that written down? Where is that planned? What's the ask? What was the need? What was the goal? What was the thing that started this? You're saying that was the start of it. Now we find ourselves here, but I don't see that initial thing. What did we need?
I'll see the superintendent wants to answer that one.
Well, I.
You want to talk about it and then write it up.
I don't think that the, I don't think that the the plan calls for adding like a dozen classrooms or something like this. It was more driven by the fact that the. Classrooms that we currently have, particularly in the elementary. Part. Is. That the space that was that's allocated for those classrooms is inadequate. For the numbers of students that we have in a way that we teach students. Today. So that those classrooms are built back in the day when the way that we taught was we lined kids up. In in desks.
Mark.
For, you know, for. Okay.
I I'm hearing this overall theme. The way we teach them now is antiquated. I've heard the pain. I'm asking specifics. How much more space do we need for a student and and which expert is giving us that opinion? I I am asking for specifics. I'm not asking for the architect to say in a video, we used to have four vessels, like there were empty vessels, like like. This is all abstract thoughts that then lead to a brand new building. I like, where's the concrete numbers of space that we needed and who said we needed according to what experts?
Clayton, I think, you know, if you want to call on Dave Schilling. Because he was involved in this from the beginning. I know he's got some thoughts about. About how we got to where we were with these recommendations. I understand, think I understand what Karina is asking, but I think Dave might have an answer.
Sure. And this is not a, you know, I'm not talking about the final outcome. The process started with a need for for elementary space. Combined with noticing that there are guidance counselors in closets, et cetera, you know, so what that led to was TruX leading several conversations. There was a community conversation. Parents were invited to weigh in on what they would like to see. That happened pre COVID. After that, there were staff conversations with TruX. And Karina, it's kind of hard for me to identify who the expert is who's not an architect because. While I understand that they have a financial interest, that's that's the expert in who's designing the building. We've vetted three architecture firms. TruX rose to the top based on their designs for other spaces and based on their comprehensive approach. The next step was to do a mechanical study. Where TruX brought engineers in and looked at the existing facility to say. What would need to be done? You know, if we just needed to add on for say an elementary classroom and two offices. What does that bring up for the rest of the building? What does that trigger? Is there sprinkler system needs, safety system needs? Can you even do it? Is our building constructed in such a way that you can add on or are there structural issues? And that's where we got the first two hundred page report. After that report. TruX did another round of stakeholder interviews. And came back with the the first of the three options, the option that essentially. Was adding on elementary classroom space, shifting the middle school over to the nineteen thirty seven building. And reconstructing the nineteen fifty seven building, which is the most structurally sketchy part of the school. The number that came back was huge. We asked them to go back and look at it again. They came back with a second plan. That still added elementary space that still met the space needs, but kept the nineteen fifty seven building. The cost difference, and and I get that it's a huge cost. I'm not saying it's not. The cost difference between those two. Was pretty small compared to the what was being proposed. You know, there was a lot of. Essentially, the challenge is adding on to the nineteen fifty seven building, which is the hardest to do. So that's when the third option came up. Somebody finally said, look. You've got these two astronomical figures. How much is the third option? How much is just building a new school compared to these two giant numbers you're already throwing out? And that's sort of, that's how we got here.
Okay, so I I think I I'm hearing then that. An architect firm gives us a recommendation for how to do the thing we ask. And the ask for more space, it sounds like. When we tell them we need X amount more space, how do we do that? That's coming from the teachers and from the principal, like where where is that ask coming from? The architect? Yes, is the expert that tells us how to achieve the thing. But someone has to make that happen.
In this situation, the the experts are the teachers and the and the people in this building. And so if you talk to people who work in this building in different roles. Some of the classrooms feel fine, some of them. But then you think about intervention where you're pulling kids in small groups and bringing them to a space. We don't have those spaces. That wasn't anything we used to do. And so when you think about a lot of how that works, some of those times people are sharing spaces and there's two small groups of learning of people who are really trying to make some gains and a thing that's hard for them and now they're in the same space and a distracting space. Does not fit for that and built for that. And that's just one example, but the the experts who started this were. Were the the people who work in this building and it was them going to the administration who brought who brought the proposal or the problem to us. And and when we first started, it was like, oh, maybe. Maybe we need some trailers out there. We'll we'll start there, but that's not a permanent solution. And that's why it went to to a next level because it when you walk into a school like this, there's nobody who's going to be able to say you need this much square footage per child. Because every child is different and they have a different footprint. And so the the experts in them are the employees in the building.
And I think that, and I appreciate that. And yes, you guys are the experts in that. I think the trend. What's difficult on this end is that we're just hearing, we started needing more space. And we're not seeing. Like I said, this is a huge burden to put on the community and we're not seeing that. We're not seeing that there was a problem. Like here's the problem. I mean. Do we, how do we know that the teachers didn't just give their wish list and then the architect just built a wish list? Like, or did we actually go through the process as they? Love to have her student. But here's what's. Here's the most cost effective way to do that. Here's the financial viability of it. That that process. Feels very. Untransparent and we don't have a lot of confidence.
And and here's the problem is right now, we're we're at the end of the ripple effect. Like right now, we're like, oh, here's here's where it's going out into the community and everyone's hearing about it. This has been a discussion. Of the board for a for a long time. And so if you think about when we first hired that firm. That was a while ago and before that, we were already trying to problem solve the space issue. So if you go back to the board meeting minutes, we've been talking about space in this building. For a really long time and and perhaps you're right, we just haven't been shouting it loud enough and I don't know that we knew who to say it to then. Because we were trying to solve a problem and and when we couldn't solve the problem, we said, well, let's bring in the experts. And you're right, the experts brought back this solution. Right now, we're looking at something. I mean, here's the thing is at the end of the day, we're looking at what's best for kids. We all know what's best for kids, build them a new building. Now we're looking at what's the viability of that. And that's why we're here is we're not saying we're building a new building. We're saying what's the viability of that? What's, how reasonable is that? Because I.
Well, and I think that's where it goes back to like. It like did space is an issue. Did this architect firm just take all the wishes and create this because it seems it's a really big number? Or did we have a third party that doesn't have a financial interest at some level, facilitator somewhere? Saying, okay, here's what the ask is. This is what we can reasonably and viably do. Saying, okay, here's what the ask is, this is what we can reasonably and viably do, and, and. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and. The other part we got really lost in is the fact that our building is a building that was built and then added and then added and then added, and so to add now. Um, any of those systems that need to cross connect, there's no connecting, connecting point between them, and so when we were looking at, well, what, what does it cost just to maintain our building? What does it cost to, to put the air things back on the roof so that they, it's breathable and it holds heat? Um, we were already looking into the, the tens of millions of dollars just to maintain of the building that we have, and so again, that's. That's the other part of that too, is then looking at what is, what does it cost us to just maintain this? And then what does it cost to give us what we need, and again, we're, we're maintaining something that doesn't provide everything we need.
And so that takes me to my second part of my question is, in the deficits of the building. Peas after TruX did the walk through, um, to be honest, there's a lot in that that feel like. Unnecessary things to fix, I think there's a picture of the door with salt damage on the front of the door, we need to replace, like. And it, it sounds like we're taking a building and trying to make it perfect, and any old building, there's going to be some things that aren't perfect, a crack in the foundation, is that, is that really? Structurally a problem, or has that been there for fifty years, it's, I, there was a lot in that, and have we done, have we? Gone through that, and Julie said like, what is?
So in, in a lot, in a lot of ways, we've gone through that, and what we run up against is what is code? So then what is necessary when you do a renovation and what can you no longer ignore under code? And so a lot of that, that's, we have a, the, the, one of the numbers that we have right at the beginning of, of the, of the. The cost presentation is the get right number, or the, how much it costs to turn this building to be fully coded. And some of the stuff is so old that you can't open it up and then close it back with the same old material in it.
Yeah.
And that's.
But that's also where with the advisory board, it seemed like the person who can try to raise the options of number four and number five, and that must just not lock in. One, two, three, so I guess one of my questions at this point is, I do feel like we need to be really clear. That at the final advisory meeting, the only reason that people specifically said, sure, build the kids a new building is because of with.
Absent cost, right.
Exactly.
With no, with no consideration of cost.
Five, three, assessment, like that really, we're not really given the true opportunity to have a community conversation of what are the options, what are the ideas?
We're having it now.
We are having it now.
That's, and we're going to continue to have it.
Right, and that's great, and one other piece though is, at this point in the conversation, are you saying? The only thing we're moving forward with is a new bill, or are options one and two still in the mix? And can options four and five even be added in at this point?
So what Tim just said was, we are assessing the feasibility of what we can do.
Right, and is that option just build, the new build, or is it one, two, three?
I think we have to look at all the things.
Yeah.
I think we have to look at all the things, because I.
Wasn't the email that came out to people, because the email to the advisory um, board was, you choose one, two, three, what's it going to be? So it was kind of like, boom, you choose it.
So I, one of the reasons that that went to the advisory was because the, the advisory was stuck in this spot. When that shouldn't have been them, it should have been us, and so they were stuck with this tough decision. And so we sort of had to remove that from them and then have you guys come to us and not them through.
They understand that, don't talk about the money, we're going to figure that out, we'll do that all together in a different point, which is starting to happen now, which is great. This is still hypothetical, right, but it's still helping to sort of give us a sense a little bit. But the other piece to it is, does that mean that there's zero conversation allowed for four and five, options four and five, for example? Which people were starting to develop in that advisory meeting. So what I'm saying is, like basically, when you go to the vote, right, and you guys determine or however it's going to happen, we're doing a new bill, it's on the vote. It's like, yeah, you're next, so is there room, or what about option four, what about option five?
So by the time it goes to the, to the vote, we have to have like a, a number or a, or a plan by the time we go to the vote. And so, but, but I think that now the time for those discussions of four and five.
Okay.
I think, I think those are things, it would be really helpful to get ahead of time too, so we can really run some numbers and look at things. Between meetings, um, you know, what, what does it look like for this, because if you throw that at us right now, we're. We can, we can throw out numbers, but they won't be real.
Right.
You know, they'll be, they'll be more hypothetical.
And I know estimates cost money, and I know there's a lot of tradespeople in this area, and this came out like early on, even during the school year last year of like, how can those bays go to look? People, if we're going to choose a fix or choose this side or the other, and ideally that would happen, but I just feel like we're locking into one, two, three versus really looking at. You know, what are some of the other options?
I, I would say looking at the numbers, I would not consider us locked in.
We're not locked in, so, so un, unlock. Okay, so Mark, we're going to say something, and then I've got Kristen, Mark, did you have something?
Mark, tell her. Yeah, a couple of things, I just, Karina, if, I, I just want to speak to the, if I can, to their question about. The motivation of the architects, we did not pay them based on the, based on the square foot of their recommended solution. Okay, it was a fixed cost to come in and design or make recommendations, conceptual recommendations for. Projects based on what is, as Tim said, what the teachers and the administration and. The parents who came to provide input back two plus years ago when we were first gathering this information, said was their vision. For the school, so that's one point, um. I, I'm not quite sure when people, they're throwing around option four and option five now, if option four is. In addition and renovate the existing building and five is build a new building, is that what four and five is?
No.
No, they're lesser.
Or are these?
There, there, there are other ideas, Mark.
Okay, so now we're talking about, let's go out and spend money on, on other conceptual solutions to see if those make sense. We're pretty far down the road in terms of figuring out, you know, what might lie ahead of us. Um, you know, the decision on whether we build, you know, the recommendation to build a new building versus renovate the existing building and add on to it. I think came down to largely to concerns about what would the school environment be like? Uh, in a, uh, in the cost of renovating in place while we're trying to operate uh, the school and educate students in the building. I would invite anybody to go and take a look at what happened in Winuski. Uh, with their renovation project, which is just finishing up, they didn't have land to build on. And so they did a fifty-five, fifty-six million dollar renovation, and they did what our uh, renovate and. Add on to option would look like, and they did it in place with students in the school at that time. One of the things that the architects have pointed out to us is that there, when you take that approach to. A project like this, there are inherent additional costs in doing that, that are a function of trying to move people around. Close out spaces so you can work on them, open spaces up, move kids again, et cetera, et cetera, so there's some. I, I almost think, I honestly think of it as wasted money, just trying to, trying to operate the school while you're. Building, Danville has the good fortune of having the space to build a new building on for. And it's incrementally more expensive to do that, but it will be, uh, it will be uh, an up to code twenty-first century design and. Uh, the building project will not interfere with the education of the kids over the next two or three years. And it's actually will be completed more quickly than if we try to uh, renovate the existing building and add on to it. It's just going to be a faster project to build something new, and yes, it does cost. Uh, you know, we said, uh, you know, five or six million dollars more to do that, but. Um, you know, one of the things that we're concerned about is. If we're going to do some, we have to do something, and if we're going to do something and we try to do it with the existing building with the kids still in the school, it's going to be very disruptive.
But there are also the summers, and there are also the sort of fixed, it's what's needed and sort of prioritized and trying to break it down that way, so there would be essentially other approaches. And I know Marvin Muthers specifically brought up, you know, do nothing, say that was option five, for option four, what's the priority issue? What, we're going to go in in the summertime into the ceiling, are we doing, get rid of the lead, you know, on the, for the water situation, what are we doing for airflow, et cetera, like? Is that something that's been assessed, and maybe it has, I've been to most of his meetings and watched them, but I'm just wondering, is there a more realistic financially feasible option? That will do what needs to be done, or that will offer you, maybe it won't offer you the space. Four hundred and fifty students or so in the nineties, but three hundred and fifty so students now, is there a way, and maybe you guys have already gone through this and forgive me if you have. But is there a way that you have, have you tried to rework? Can we rework the school, is there a way to make something happen, I know you brought up the modular stuff, and it's not a long-term solution. But it's a financially feasible solution, when you're talking about a limited amount of taxpayers who had, who then have to take this on. I mean, it's actually kind of cruel, and I know you don't mean it that way, but even at sixty thousand dollars a year, you think about what people are paying. You throw inflation into the mix, people are paying six hundred dollars a month for gas and expenses, so then you throw the sixty thousand dollars, and say you've got three kids. Right, and you've got all those expenses, so you're someone who's retired and has been saving, 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 and it's either pay my taxes in the state or, or move. Because I really want to go to Japan, and I wanted to go to Japan for fifty years, you know, and I just think it comes down to, like, those are realities for people. You know, that need to be considered.
So, okay. You.
Uh, my concern is. If it's all over the news, economy lousy down, is potentially going to go right off the cliff. So that's why you're seeing where, you know, me even questioning, you know, well, I'd like to have a nice new school, great, I'd love it. But I just want to make sure we're not killing people, forcing them to just walk away from their homes three years from now.
Hmm.
That's my concern.
And thank you for coming, right, and thank you for coming, like, that's, that's what we're doing here, we're, we're trying to get a, a sense of what's going on. Are you next, Kristen, or me?
Yeah, I have a question, um, I know, I'm sure that this has been discussed. But I like your idea about fixing what, you know, starting on top of the ladder, fixing what needs to be fixed, so then we come to space. I, I'm sure you have, but if you run, I mean, isn't it maybe time to think about tuitioning a high school out? So that we have the space for the kids here? That the elementary, I mean, we're, we're already, wouldn't, almost be saving money because we're getting more per child. In this school than the academy or London Institute.
But we, but we.
That's not true.
We did run the, we did run those numbers, that when you're tuitioning them out, there's, there's costs associated with that, because you're still paying to educate them.
Well, well, right, right, what was the number, you know, I'm just wondering, I was, I heard it said, it was twenty-three cents, so. What's that difference versus?
Well, so I ran, I did run some numbers that I, I um, double checked which is God, and I don't have to get into the weeds with this now, but. In terms of the impact, if you take the make good cost with just fixing the major systems and bringing it up to code. That would increase our taxes by forty-five cents.
That's the thirty-two million.
That's the thirty-two million, thirty-two million make good cost would increase our taxes by forty-five cents. Um, if you look at our tax rate of a dollar thirty-eight that we currently have, the total would be a dollar eighty-five. Um, so if you close the high school at twenty-three cents for operational losses, where the tuition students not sustaining us. Um, plus the make goods, we got to fix the school, it's um, sixty-eight cents. Additional for a total of two dollars and six cents. So in putting this in context, the state of Vermont, Woodstock and Snow are at like a dollar seventy, a dollar eighty for their taxes. So we would be the highest, I hate to say it, but we would have the highest um, tax in the state of Vermont, and we went through with any of these three options. Um.
Or the one you just mentioned.
Or the one, that one, the, yeah, with, with the two dollars and six cents, with the make good and close the high school with, with those, with that twenty-three cent number that. Um, that Mike and Mark came up with, we'd be at two dollars and six cents. Like the outlier, I think, Killington at like two dollars, and that's like an outlier, you know?
They have more taxpayers.
And.
Right.
And just to be, and just to be clear, that make good number did not include any costs, you know, this idea of. Um. Of closing the high school and moving kids around. The make good cost did not include any additional expenses for uh, renovating classrooms to make them more functional for elementary students. It was actually looked at to say, well, why don't we just, you know, can we move the elementary school down into the high school classroom spaces? If they became available, and those spaces aren't correctly configured for elementary instruction, so it's not, you know, it. The make good number is take exactly what you have today, bring it up to code, don't change any of your floor space, don't add any additional space. Don't do any reconfiguration of any of the space, just bring it up to code. And that's thirty-two billion dollars, okay, and that doesn't solve, that doesn't begin to get to the, the issues around inadequate spacing. Or inadequate space for instruction, or for the other support activities that have to go on in the twenty-first century school.
All right, we got four, I got four stacked up, Mark.
What about, is it, they've been discussed about shutting whole school down, is sending all the kids down?
Not yet, but here we are, so.
Yeah.
What's, what's the cost on that?
Well, that's something I, I mentioned to Clayton, is if we had a process where everybody just throw every idea up on a board, and you have. Space and you have old school, and you check off which ones meet those, and then do break up into small groups and do programs and. Really try to figure out where.
As you're, you're figure, what is it, seventy-five million? Is, you know, with the inflation in that is going to be way more.
Right.
So.
So, who's going to absorb that cost?
All right, that seventy-five million dollars includes an inflationary factor. There's almost four and a, there's almost four and a half million dollars built into that estimate for uh, for inflation costs.
That's not.
You know, you. Well, uh, maybe you're right, I don't know.
All right, Lance.
I think, I think to, first of all, Andy had made the, the argument, I think it, it's school meeting, the last board meeting, we were talking about, I know school, school choice and, and, and is. Kind of a, a naughty word for a lot of people, but to some, we look at it and say, well, what is that real cost, and Melissa was kind of asking, nobody's really seen that, how? How, you know, is it more expensive than spending seventy-five plus million dollars on a new, new building? If we could somehow come up with a plan to uh, look at that as a possibility, to use a high school space for the need for elementary. And the survey was done in twenty eighteen, and that was prior to any of us, maybe some of you kind of started getting an idea of what this new cost would be. And, and many of us sitting here hadn't done that survey even back in twenty eighteen, I know I had a lady come to my home and asked, and, and that's how I, I heard of the discussion, but. Um, personally, I would, I would, I would like to see, see that.
Oh, that's, you mean back when the petitions were going around and everything?
Right, that's correct, and, and I know that, that, you know, it was mentioned in the last meeting, like, we, we already went down that, it was overwhelming, um, you know. Vote for retaining the school, but I think that was prior to us knowing that, of, of, of the burden that's going to put on this community. And so I, I personally would like to see that working back up as a, if it's an option four or five, but even in its form or whatever looked at. And, and if someone could do the math for us to kind of map out how tuitioning our, our, our children, I suppose, is more expensive than a new building.
To show, to show, okay, um, Steve.
Uh, just a theoretical question, or it is a question, so if uh. The town was supporting going annually, they had to, going for a bond and spent seventy-five million dollars. Um, your debt service on that per student per year would be probably twelve thousand dollars a year. Did that, so you, we would, you would add that, that per student per year to your. What you do now, what, what do you figure your cost per student is here now, what would it be like?
Eighteen, 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 eight change.
So you'd add that twelve to it in theory, because that really was cost. So, as we raise our tuition from the sending town, so that.
We can't, we legally cannot, so.
So they're going to get a free ride, basically, right? Yeah, it was out of that twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand, this is a cost per student, right? Right, but, but in the tuition, tuition since running the towns, the other town with ten, right, little school, and it will have to be, I mean. I mean, just, just, just throw it out, you know, if we're talking about fairness and equity.
I hear you.
Something I was thinking about. Okay. A deal has, but it's something that you said.
All right, does anybody want to move on to the next one? See, the next one is.
Clayton, Stacy has her hand up on screen.
Who does?
Stacy, Andrea does.
She can talk.
I know.
You're too kind, uh, I appreciate this conversation and the discussion, uh. It, it is a hard one to swallow, really, um, you know, knowing and being here uh, in Danville, I, I'm torn. Um, as much as I would love to see a bricks and mortar, uh, new, brand new spanking building going up, um. That's tough, that's tough for me to swallow, especially being uh, potentially the most expensed, highest taxed. Town in the whole state of Vermont. Um, that property taxes, our property values will plummet. Uh, and I'm concerned about that, that my property value will go down so that I can pay a high tax, because everything is relative. And so I'm very worried about that, when I want to resell my property, uh, and potentially. You know, retire somewhere, if it's not here, maybe somewhere else, uh, it, it's going to be all, that's a tough, tough game. Um, I still think that we do need to, um. Look at some more options. Uh, uh, timing is everything, right? Uh, pre-COVID, we were in a banner year. We were going and rocking and rolling and now it's different. Inflation is uh, upon us, higher um. Uh, it's at least eight percent. Supply chain issues are a problem. Uh, getting uh, all sorts of manufactured goods right now are, are, it, it's tough. But there's a lot of delays and prices are increased. So I think we have to think about that in how this looks in our future. Um, I know that you mentioned a modular unit as a temporary solution. Um, there have permanent. Modular construction that is lovely. It's lead green buildings. Uh, that um, could potentially increase your capacity as a freestanding building. Possibly for classrooms, possibly the library, possibly for guidance, maybe the pre-K. I don't know. But I think that um. We need to open the floor again to discuss how. Seventy-five million's a lot and that's probably just the beginning number. So now it's uh, everything's back on the table again and, and I appreciate everyone's efforts and, and, and time here. Uh, you have spent a tremendous amount of time and effort and energy to get us to this point and I do appreciate that. And having the patience to uh, lend the floor to the public. Uh, because sometimes we're a little slow to come to the. Come to the table. Um, but we do appreciate having this public discussion and giving our input. So I wanted to let you know that. So, thank you.
All right, so, thank you, Stacy. So back to, you want to go to the next one? Did anybody here? Try to figure out how many more taxes that they would have. With the formula. Cause I did.
Yep.
And it's a big number. Molly did a big number. Did anybody else? Does anybody want to yell them out? Right in there?
People to what I paid my mortgage.
Right, so my, mine was, mine was like forty, forty-two hundred dollars more. So not forty-two hundred for the taxes and forty-two hundred more, in addition. So.
Yeah.
Right in there, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Big numbers.
We can do what Victory does and just don't plan to homicide it. If the non-resident, if I have to keep, I have the residents, so.
Pretend you don't live here, right? You pretend you don't live here.
That's another option you have to look at is, what if? Fifty people in towns all their houses to somebody that lives out of state?
Hey.
And they don't.
This is, this is, this is. This is the one that we're going to clarify, this is the one we're going to clarify in writing because. That shouldn't, that, that really shouldn't factor. So can everybody here? Because we're trying to amass frequently asked questions where you have a question that you don't think was asked. Answered correctly, send in your question in writing. Would that be okay with everybody? Can, can, can do that?
Is there just one email or is there a joint?
If you send it to me, then I'll forward it to them. No, it's, 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 it just only comes on my phone, but then I forward it to them and I said, look at this one. And so like, like. Then we all see it that way. And so, but we have to, we have to figure out what the questions are so that we can figure out how we can answer the questions. And so it would be great if you can do that. So I, our next meeting that we're going to do. Does anybody have any more questions before, before I try to wind us down here?
Sorry, Tim, what's that? Uh. The timeframe, they were saying, get a, get us the information so we can. Right, so what is, like, what is our timeframe?
Not.
I think I asked last time.
You asked, yeah.
Sure.
So not super soon? Let's, if I say that, not, not.
Soon is like next. Talking not next year?
Yes, sometime. No. Not March, not April, not May, not June. Maybe November.
But remembering that we have a problem we have to solve. That's the other part of it is that we have an ongoing problem that we've been. Working through, but not well. And so. Those.
Urgency is there, but we're not talking next.
Right. So there, yeah, there's, what, what, what is an emergency to replace? Nothing today, but maybe something tomorrow. And so we have this, we have to sort of get on the stick.
I was just wondering, would it be, thinking about what Karina said, it would be helpful to look. If one of us goes back a minute, go back to the minutes that you were referencing, Tim, and pull out some of that.
Some of the previous discussions.
History around where the conversation started and I was thinking like one tangible is we have ten three-year-olds that can't get into preschool and that's one tangible that we have. Um, but maybe sifting through with, with one of us or some of us sit through some of those minutes and come up with some of the comments that teachers had and. Just to make sure people are getting that, that part of it, but um. She maybe didn't read at the time or spend on the board meeting at the time.
Yeah, I, I think one of the other things about that is that, is that we're not bound with TruX any, at any way or form, like they, they don't. They don't own the rights to, to whatever and everything goes out to bid. So it's not, we paid them money to do work, they did work and then that. Because they don't have to take any more of the work, we don't have to give it to them. When I, when I, some sort of a contract with a going forward.
So, so TruX is a cost embedded by. Other, other groups, not to say or not anything untrue, but just has anyone else taken that and looked at the national, this is probably there with whatever and said, yeah, this is a cost we've read, this is this word. I mean, has it been vetted to seventy-five?
Mark, you want to answer that one? Or Dave?
No, no.
Dave should.
Well. Well, if I understand in the question, you're asking, did we take TruX's work and pay another firm to? Validate it?
What did we, did we take?
If that's a. If that's a question, then the answer is no. I mean, we made a decision, this is a firm that's does work in Ver- in Vermont and is. Uh, does a lot of these kinds of projects, has a lot of experience with these kinds of projects. This is not. Their first rodeo in terms of doing school renovation, school design. One of the reasons we picked them is that they have a, a track record of. You know, of designing and, and seeing to completion, successful school renovation and building projects around the state. TruX, Colin did the Winuski renovation project. If you. Uh, if you drive through Winuski now, I think it'll kind of look like a school again. It's looked like a war zone for three years, but. It kind of looks like a school again and you get a sense of what that looks like. Clyde, the other thing I wanted to mention, you know, we, I, this is a shocking amount of money and, and I want to remind everybody that we're talking about this. As if there's no other source of money available. We're talking about this project at a time when the state. Currently does not provide state aid to school construction and I don't. I don't know if Scott Beck is still in the, in the audience. If he is, I don't know if he wants to say anything about. Where the state of Vermont is or where the legislature is thinking about, uh, because I know they're doing a lot of study and thinking about. Problems with not just, not just Danville, but every, every school in the state of Vermont and doing an inventory of what the needs are. And their existing school bu- buildings. And I don't know if Scott, if you have a perspective that you're comfortable sharing. With this group tonight, because it's a very realistic. Challenge. I think we'd be having a slightly different discussion if, if we knew, you know, if we were doing this in two thousand and six. We could be pretty much counting on a third of this cost to be paid from state aid to school construction. And I don't know that that's ever going to come back i- at that ratio, but. You know, and if Scott, you know, if Scott doesn't want to answer that and you can call me up later and yell at me for putting you on the spot, I'm not in the room with you, but.
He looks like he might talk.
Um, so. In two thousand and seven, before my final legislation, in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, um, when the great recession that. There was literally no demand from the school districts to. Build new schools through that period of time and there was a lot of demands on money. And so. The decision was made to zero out the um, school. And I think philosophical shift that was made then, which was just probably half a dozen years after that sixty. Was that the, the funding formula in and by itself. Provides aid. To districts and that aid is dependent on their, their income and their. And their property law. Uh, for example, in uh, in Danville, the project you are looking at. And the number I think is correct that Mike was calculating is that Danville homestead owners were paid thirty-two percent. Of the cost of this project. The other sixty-eight percent will get picked up by all of the other property owners all throughout the state of Vermont. Every other town, homestead, non-homestead, you name it. So effectively the fund in and by itself. Acts as a, a supplier, sixty-eight percent. Uh, I think your, your most district said, hey, with this, with other, all the other property taxpayers in the state. Pay sixteen percent of the cost of the project. You would all be like, yeah, that'd be awesome. And that's, that's how the, the system is designed to work. And that's the way it does work. Um, towns that have. More property wealth or more income wealth. They don't get as much support. I had conversations with Woodstock. Woodstock is planning on building a, we're talking about building a. New school as well and um, of course they have a very different. Property wealth and new income wealth than we do around here. Uh, this, the um, those homestead owners would probably end up paying eighty percent. Of the cost. So the fund itself does work as a construction vehicle. Um, so I, I don't see, I don't see any likely kind of state to take their own monies. Um, to reinvent the construction aid. There is the potential, it's been talked about that the feds might. Do something and that, that money will of course flow through. To, to districts, um, but I, I just don't see the state. Uh, re, reigniting that state construction.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Well, Scott, that's how. That's helpful, but what I think I just heard you say was to validate what. Mike was saying in his presentation that thirty-two percent of the, or sixty-eight percent of this cost is picked up by. Taxpayers that don't live in Danville. Is that what I just heard you say?
No, um, sixty-eight percent of the. Cost gets picked up by all of the other property owners in the state. Not including Danville homestead owners. So you're not, that properties in Danville would be included in that sixty million. But they share it with the rest of the state too. It wouldn't just be all.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Olive and just really like that's the thing that's not gonna.
Yeah, that means a thirty-two percent sixty, that, that's just basically. Is a, is a function of what Danville property wealth. And income is right now.
And we've been getting that for a while, is that?
Oh, yeah, you get that on everything. Yeah, sure.
It's a standard number. I don't even know how much variability would be.
The only, the only variability would be this, if relative to the rest of the state, if Danville's properties um. Became much more valuable or much less valuable. Then that thirty-two percent could change, but. That thirty-two percent is probably pretty solid, pretty, pretty vast. She doesn't move quite a lot.
But that's why it goes to the CLA again. That's why th- there's always that extra factor.
That's kind of a conversation beyond that, but the CLA. Um, it's only, well, it only affects people if they get into property tax. Doesn't affect the people that pay based on income. That is only to correct. For situations where the um. It's, 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 it's calculated that the price of the home. The, the actual market value of the home deviates from the tax of creative value. That's all C R A.
Okay, yeah.
You added that thirty-two percent, that, and you'd be responsible for it? My taxes will go. And it's, it's, ju- just that thirty-two percent is going to put such a pressure on the majority of us. That.
I don't know. What keeps someone who doesn't have kids here from staying here?
Yeah, and we're wanting to come in and buy. Place.
Yeah.
All right, I got two hands up. I, I, I'll go first with Mike and Stacy.
Yeah, I, I can, I can see that that first slide we threw up. I don't know. Might have thrown people off. The, the intent of that first slide was just to educate. The Danville public of how we are today. It was never meant to mislead. Or. I don't know. I, I just feel like it, it got a lot of un, undesired criticism and that wasn't the intent.
All right. So I'm going to Dave Schilling now.
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in one more time on the process because I think. It's hard sometimes when we, now that we're, here we are at the end, looking at these giant numbers to um. And we want to go back and look for loopholes in the process. We want to look for what TruX did. We want to look for what teachers did. Um. And you know, I say this without really having. Enough of a stake, you know, I moved on to a different role. I've got my yurt and two vans. I'm sort of happy with that. Um, I have my own taxpayer problems in my own town with. School that has forty-eight students. Um. So, all that said. I don't think anybody here wants to raise people's taxes ninety-eight percent. I don't think anybody here wants to make Danville the highest taxed town in the state. I don't think anybody here wants to put people out of their houses. Um, what I heard tonight was, was good that we're at a point where we're looking at this now from a lot of different angles and figuring out what we need. Um, the TruX report guides us. The staff feedback guides us and now we look at what our different options are, but I think that. The, you know, the, the data is valid. It doesn't mean the cost. Is valid and it doesn't mean the cost is acceptable, but the data is valid. And so I hopefully that data will continue to guide us as we look for different options.
All right.
Yeah, I just want to bring us back to Lance's question about the numbers. I think that there are, I've heard a lot of, from people. Um, the make good number. Feels really big and it feels like it is not just. It's, what does make good mean? It doesn't feel like it's what has to be done. So bring it to code or for functioning. It feels. Like what would need to be done to make the current building perfect. And I think that that's not necessarily what needs to be done. Um, if. If that number is really what needs to be done, like it needs to be done to this building. Then it begs the question of how did we get here? What ball has been dropped that has led us to a place that right now we have to put what thirty-five? Million dollars just to make the building functional? That seems insane. So if you're agreeing to that, if you're agreeing that thirty-five million dollars needed to make this building functional as it is. Then someone needs to take some accountability for how we got here and we weren't keeping up with this maintenance to get here. If that's not the case. Then that no, and that number is just everything that could be done to make it perfect and beautiful. Then maybe we need to go back and look at those items on that list and pick out what really needs to be done.
My understanding is it's the first. My understanding is of those two scenarios, it's the first one.
Okay, but something on that.
Yeah.
I thought about was when we think about our operating budget and building in that cushion for building maintenance, because we want to do that with whatever project we have. How does that then impact our taxes as well? Because there would be an increase if we're putting more of a cushion to make sure we're having building maintenance. Um. And if we wanted to hire, you know, for new programming, all those people they wanted to be able to do with a new building or renovated building. I think those are important points to think about. It's like, how, right, how do we prevent this going forward to make sure that we. Have what we need to, to maintain the building.
And started talking about the option. But.
Okay.
All right. What you're saying, which. This part. Could you, uh. If we just like this choice now. I'm just. I seen it, um, to, you know, when I mentioned earlier about school choice, that it should be looked at and um. Can be as a potential option. Now that we, now that we have some.
But, yeah, so. Dave?
So, um, so. You put school choice as number six, okay? Let's say um, you have a hundred and sixty kids in the high school. And well, it's, it's a large number.
So we.
I'm in, we have about one.
I think the.
But nine hundred Danville kids.
I'm going to pick a hundred, yeah, thanks. So if. Um, pick a local private school and. Ask them if they can take a hundred kids. No, they don't have to take any kids.
I think that might have come out of one school either. We got all surrounding.
That's right. But if, if only forty of them want to go to other schools and sixty of them want to stay. The o- option six is blown out of the water because you still have to educate those sixty kids that want to. Stay in high school.
You can't even go do it that way. That's your lead.
The administration and the board and the parents.
No, uh, if you operate a school, you operate a school, you can't, there's no picking and choosing.
So you either make a choice or you don't and figure it out.
I don't think that.
Cavis closed their high school. So did, and so did.
Cavis High School's up.
Oh, thinking of um.
Yeah, Cavis, Concord.
Concord. Close theirs down. Okay, so they either went here. They went to LA or they went to the academy. So they didn't give an option. So don't say that they're, that we have to take them.
No, no.
We don't. Yeah.
Well, there's, there's a lot of schools that we take. That will take the young kids.
So I'm not, I'm, don't get it wrong. I want the best education. I'm not saying sacrifice education. That isn't what I'm saying at all.
The shiny building would be education.
We took shiny off, we, we took shiny out of the estimates. We took shiny off, we took shiny out of the estimate. It's, it's, there's not gonna, it is not gonna be shiny, it's all, it's all like a matte paint.
Okay, but, but just faith and proof of education. So, and, and that's, that's the thing, that, that's what makes this really hard, is realistically, if we didn't have to worry, if none of us had to worry about money. It makes sense to build a new building, cause we all want that for our kids. We want that for our kids in the ones coming up behind them. You want, that's. And so now you have to look at it the other way, and you're like, wow, this feels terrible, to now saying I don't wanna give the kids a new building, even though. It's what they deserve, it's what, it's what's best, but, but that, and that's why we're here, and that's why we're having this discussion. Because if it was simple, we wouldn't have to have this discussion.
Alright, now we gotta decide, you can go if you want to, Marty, but after you go, we're, we're gonna see where we're gonna go from here.
You're talking about. School classrooms and that. I, I went to school at this school in nineteen eighty-four. And there was kids coming from New Orleans that came down here to go to high school. They went to a one-classroom school, they served multiple grades, and they had a very good education.
Yes, we did. Being a well-done one-school student for all eight of my elementary years.
So I don't know what's changed.
Education has changed a ton in the last three years.
Well, I, I can say for myself, and this is my opinion, when you go to Marty's store and a person makes a mistake. And you hand him a ten-dollar bill, and they punch in a hundred, and they don't know how to make you change, education is spam.
Well, that, that's, we'll leave that. Okay, so to everybody here. This is, thi- thi- this is one series that means we're gonna have, on the first Tuesday of every month, we have our regular board meetings. And at our regular board meetings, we're probably gonna be discussing regular board business. Not that we're not gonna be discussing this, and if, if fifteen people different show up. And they wanna have this same discussion, we'll have to have the same discussion, but if it's this gang, can you guys come back? On the third Tuesday of next month, whatever day that is, and we'll continue this discussion so that we can keep. But, but, so, so we have to keep having these discussions. And now you guys are, you guys are on the team. That's, that's what, that's December the fifteenth. December the thirteenth. So, well, I'd like to schedule another meeting, and this is, this, this is for you guys. The first Tuesday is our regular board meeting.
The fifth of December, and then two weeks later is the nineteenth of December.
No, no. You're in the wrong year, I think. That's, that's December twenty.
No, it's, I'm on Tuesday, sixth and twentieth.
So, sixth and twentieth. So, can we, do you guys wanna try the thirteenth? Is anybody available on the thirteenth? No. No? So the boring stuff's gonna happen, whether there's games or not. She, she's on the advisory. She took a lot of punishment on the advice. You can go to a game. So, what I'd like to do then is, we, please come back to our regular board meeting if you'd like to on the sixth, and then we'll schedule a meeting in December the thirteenth. And then, if we have, we have to have a forum, and it's your, it's your mother's birthday, and she has a game?
We're talking about the thirteenth or the twentieth?
The thirteenth. You got a game?
And, and the twentieth is a home game, so that's not a good day.
Right.
Twentieth is home versus.
Not really, but I'm.
What if we did November twenty-ninth, and just do every, like, OVO, you know?
Yeah, every two.
Two weeks from now.
What's happening on the twenty-ninth?
There is nothing happening that I could see. Sarah, did you see anything?
Who's available November the twenty-ninth?
It looks, I think, uh, the firefighter class is happening that night, so we wouldn't be able to be in the cafeteria. The twenty-ninth.
That's a problem.
I mean, I, I don't know how easy it is to move them to a different location offhand, so.
Well, there's, yeah, there's a lot of them.
There is, yes. The auditor, we could, we could try the auditorium.
About the thirtieth. Alright, so, so, so let's go to the twenty-ninth and we'll go to the auditorium. Mark Tucker.
So what are we doing this?
We're saying, yeah, twenty-ninth in the auditorium.
Twenty-nine, that's, we've been able to twenty-nine. Mark, your hand is still up? Mark, you wanna talk?
I'm sorry, I think you should have the next, the next meeting in one of our fine, uh, interior inadequate. Classrooms and let people get a taste of what it's like to get an education in this building right now. The auditorium's nice and spacious, so is the cafeteria. We've talked about that, we've talked about that in the past, and I don't think people, I, you know, a lot of the. I'm glad all these people are here, but a lot of them, I don't think, really, probably don't appreciate what. The state of the existing building is, and I think that, you know, they should, you should start showing that more.
Yeah.
Auditorium, I, I disagree. I think the auditorium, it's a lot better set up.
Okay, so that's that one, and our regularly. Dave, you got a question coming from Alice?
I was curious, your experience in the year right now, and if that's impending to be seen like a year-round. Winter, is it, is winterized, and what you're thinking about the year as a space option, because if I remember correctly. If you're on, about twenty thousand dollars to buy, to put the year up?
Um. It, the yurt as a, as a winter space option for outdoor programming, it's adequate. We have a small, um. Gas stove that's coming out that we put in there, um, Bournes is dropping a tank, so. You know, it's gonna serve its purpose as a heated, semi-heated winter space for the programs that meet in there, um. Was that what you were asking?
Yes, and I was just wondering, um, I just had lived in a yurt for a while. Was it twenty thousand dollars or so to get that up, and did that include the frame?
Um, yeah, I don't actually, you know, I don't have the numbers in front of me.
It was, it was more like, it was almost thirty thousand dollars to buy it, and then there was, there was quite a bit, there was quite a bit greater expense.
Face, like a yurt is a beautiful face to be in, and I'm just thinking of, and as a potential option for more space. For younger kids, for, um, services that are being provided at the school now that haven't been in the past. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, that's, that's where you're going, okay, um. Yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's definitely a different space. It's beautiful inside. It, it works for small groups, um. Yurts don't have bathrooms, yurts don't have plumbing, yurts don't have, um. So like I was saying, um. You know, it, it, it works in this space, but it is, it is an outdoor space. Um, yes, they could. I've seen plumbed yurts, but, um. They also have about a thirty-year shelf life, you know, they're a fabric building, they wear, um, so. You know, it's an interesting option, and like Clayton said, all options are on the table for what we can do, but, um, I'm not sure I would advocate for that as a permanent solution to.
Yeah, okay, okay. So, with that, we're gonna adjourn this meeting if you want to. Um, I'd need a board member to tell me that they want it to.
I'll move to your.
I, exhausting, so, anybody else wanna talk? Public comment. Any, any other agenda items? A hearing, none. I'll take that call to adjourn from Molly, and then look for a second.